Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of February 27, 2025. I'm convening this meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spring is coming.
It's still February.
But I didn't have to wear my winter coat.
That's right. Good point. Well taken.
There's snow days coming.
Yeah, I heard.
Hold on, hope.
I'd like to open it up to public comments on any of the listed agenda items. Okay, then we're going to move to the Treasurers' Report for December, which is available in the Business Office. And then we're going to move to the Consent Agenda. Mr. Oliverio?
Yep. Resolve to approve the Consent Agenda. Items two through 10 is presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
The Consent Agenda includes approval of minutes for the previous meeting, CSE/CPSE placements, additions to the 24/25 substitute listing, approval for some unpaid work hours for various staff members, approving budget transfers through the period of January, through January 20th, excuse me, January 22nd through February 25th, 2025, that are over $25,000, approving entering into contracts with school for a classified student, co-op pricing proposal for turf, graphic remark, which is the voting software company, approving surplus assets for disposal, auction or donation, and these are the elementary school cafeteria tables which were purchased in the year 2000 and have gone to the end of their useful life. We're appointing Matthew Cirico as the Assistant Purchasing Agent. We are also approving athletic coaches and game day coordinator for the spring 2025 season.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Resolution passes. Reports? Students? We're so happy to see all of you here.
The National Honor Society Give Red for Ed Blood Drive took place yesterday. The total count is still to be announced. Congratulations to Julia DeMichael and Delina Gritz for making it to the girls' state wrestling championship. It's the first time the New York State has held a wrestling championship for girls, and they've made the first one. There's a new tardiness policy in place at the high school. It started this week, and so far, it seems to be helping. Congratulations.
I don't mean to interrupt, but what's your feeling on the policy? Your own personal feelings, how you think it's going to go?
I think that it definitely is helping some people who maybe like walk in the door at eight o'clock, just be there even just a few minutes earlier to make sure it gets to class. But I mean, no one's really seen any consequences yet because it just started. So I feel like until that happens, no one's really going to know what the extent it's going to be.
Is it distracting to the students in the class when people walk in late? Or no, they usually just slide in quietly?
I don't, sorry. I don't really think it's necessarily distracting for the students. I think it's more distracting for the teachers and their own personal agenda for the day because, you know, when people are late or when people aren't showing up, it's setting back the teachers to do their job and teach what they wanted to do because they have students that they need to catch up or vice versa. So I don't think it's necessarily the other students. I think it's between the student and the teacher who are having that issue.
Thanks. Aiden, where are you going to?
I'd like to congratulate a few of our science research students who've made it to a competition in Albany. They qualified for that and competed over the past few days. The midpoint of quarter three is on March 7. Yep, it's going quick. And congratulations to the new members of the Triem Music Honor Society, and that induction is on March 5.
Thank you.
March 5.
Did we get a notice for that?
No, we didn't get a notice on that.
No. March 5. What's the location? Do you know?
In the high school band room.
The high school band room?
On Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah.
The band room, not the stage?
No, the high school band room.
Correct.
That's March 5?
And what time does that be? Seven o'clock, is it?
I believe, yeah, it's seven o'clock. I'll confirm.
Could you do that?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, because we never received a notice on that yet.
Yeah, please know, all those events, we'd like to, we love to attend.
We'd love to attend, yeah.
So Marina is excellent at giving us dates when she's told about it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why you're here.
Thank you.
Anything else going on? Almost to the midpoint of the third marking period? Yikes.
That's amazing.
It really is.
It's going like.
It's fast.
Flying by.
Too fast.
Well, all good news. Thank you. Dr. Luft?
So I was going to talk a little bit about the blood drive, but Aiden covered. I actually have more breaking news than you do because I was going to talk about Delina and Julia and congratulate them on their state tournament bids. So I do have updated information from today, so I know both won several matches to begin the day, and I'm happy to announce that Delina Gritz actually finished fourth in her weight class across the state.
Excellent.
So she wrestled in the third four, three-four match and unfortunately lost, but she won several matches throughout the day in order to make it to that podium. So it was a really impressive showing for her, and I think I know everyone in Putnam Valley is very proud of her performance up there, as well as with Julia's. So on top of that, we did hold a Capitol Facilities meeting last evening. It was actually very well attended. I don't remember the last time we had a meeting so well-attended here in Putnam Valley. There was nearly 100 community members came out for the meeting. I thought it was extremely productive. I know there was a wide range of opinions, and really what our goal was sort of provide a foundation as to how we got where we are and then turn it over to the community members. Community members sat in small groups and they worked amongst themselves to develop their own set of priorities. What do they think is the highest priority that the Board should consider? What do they think are some of the priorities maybe the Board should consider taking off of the project, any future project? So we're going to hope to schedule one more meeting where we'll finalize the scope, we'll talk a little bit about communications, we'll provide more information about financing and how it all works, and ultimately, it is our hope that the Board make a decision on any future Capitol project during the March 13 Board Meeting. So again, extremely well-attended, very grateful for all the community members who came out. We saw many new faces, many people I've never seen before, and I welcome all of them and I hope even more come next time. But the sheer numbers were really impressive to see, and I couldn't be more grateful for everyone who came out. We actually just recently, myself and Mr. Spittle and Mr. Mello, left a meeting with some of our senior class parents. As those who may or may not be aware, our high school turf is scheduled to be replaced this summer. So the issue with that, it's about a 14-week construction cycle. So in order to have any hopes of having a fall sports season, that work has to begin sooner than when graduation is currently scheduled. So I know it's a sort of two bad options. We could either move graduation indoors, or we can move the fall season to all away games. And that's sort of, right, it's a, one's good for seniors, one's good for juniors. I was trying to balance between those two. But I thought we just had a very productive meeting. Again, it was a sort of brainstorming, a problem-solving meeting. What are the options that exist? What are some ways we can make this special? And certainly no decisions were made, but I think we left in a really good place with some really good ideas, and I think everyone left there feeling good about how we can make this special for students. We want to sort of replicate the experience of being able to walk down to the turf and do all that, and we also want to do some special things inside and provide spaces access to students. So once that's all finalized, I'm sure that information will be shared by Mr. Mello and others, but I did leave feeling very grateful for the partnership we have with our parents and very optimistic regarding what this year's graduation will look like. One thing that is certainly given is it'll be a special moment for our seniors and one that they will remember for the rest of their lives.
Were there any students?
Not in this one, but I know that Mr. Mello has student groups that he meets with. It's still early, like we're not obligated to make that, but this group of parents had reached out and requested a meeting, so this was the first step. And certainly, I think the follow-through will involve student voice as well as we finalize what those plans will look like. So we did all that. I know we spoke a little bit about the high school Aspire celebration, but I did want to remind, we got some people in the audience today. So River DeMarco painted this year's Aspire artwork. It's the last display on the left-hand side as you walk out. It's super impressive, so anybody that's here on their way out, please stop and take a look and check out some of our amazing work of our talented students. And then there's a whole bunch of stuff coming up. March 4, we have our Science Regeneron Parent Night at the high school. March 5, we just established is the Music Honor Society. March 6 is Elementary School Science and Maker Fair. March 10 is a seal by literacy in the high school library. And March 13, which is the date of our next Board Meeting, we have the dress rehearsal for the elementary school musical Jungle Book. And then soon thereafter, will come our high school musical coming up in April. So we'll have time to talk about that again before it gets here. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so we have three presentations this evening. We're going to start with our external auditors' report?
Yes. So I invited Jeff Shaver from O'Connor Davies here this evening. There's been a lot of conversation online regarding some of the financial statements, and I know this has already been presented at a public Board Meeting, but it felt appropriate to invite Jeff back and really to provide the opportunity to speak more to what some of these financial statements are, what they mean, answer any outstanding questions that may be out there, and let them be answered by the expert, who is Jeff and his team. So I don't know if anybody here has any specific questions. If not, I know that there's been some that have been shared with us, so I'd be happy to sort of reference what those are and then turn it over to Jeff to provide a much more detailed explanation than I can when it relates to financial statements, although I'm getting better. Matt will tell you. Me and him have spent a lot of time looking through financial statements. So assuming there's no questions in the audience. All right, Jeff, so I know on page 37, there was a conversation that took place regarding refunding bonds versus the next line item that speaks to various purposes, the bonds that are $10 million. Could you just speak a little bit about what refunding bonds means versus what the $10 million various-purpose bonds are on that page?
Sure. Thank you. Happy to be here. The refunding bonds, I would like to compare to, on a personal finance level, like if you had a mortgage and you had the opportunity to get a lower rate on that mortgage, and you go back to your bank and say, hey, let's refinance that loan to achieve a better interest rate, a more favorable interest rate, that's known as a refunding transaction. So you're calling the bonds that are outstanding currently, reissuing them in order to achieve a savings, net present value savings over time, over that bond. So, and those, all those refunding transactions have to be approved by New York State, and they won't approve them if there's not some demonstrated savings. So it's debt that was already there. It's just been refunded to give you, to give the district a better interest rate.
Great. And that compared to the $10 million in various other bonds, those are just existing bonds that remain to be paid off yet.
So yeah, that wasn't refunded. That was just issued several years ago in 2023. Most bonds are not callable immediately, so you might, you may have to wait years before you can, that bond could be callable and you could do a refunding transaction. Or if the interest rates aren't favorable, it may be best just to leave that outstanding. And that depends on, you know, the market and where the interest rates are falling.
Right. And just correct me if I'm wrong, that $10 million, the year that was taken out is 2023. That's the remainder of the 2018 approved project that was completed in 2021. The way for the community, the way we pay for those projects along the way are through called, something called bands. So those are bond anticipation notes. So sort of short-term lending. So as we need to pay off a vendor, we take a short-term loan, we pay them off, we take a short-term loan, we pay them off. And the way, what that allows us to do is to only spend the money we need to. So if we have a $14 million bond and we're able to complete the work for $13 million, we only ever borrow the $13 million. We don't have an extra million just hanging around that we didn't use. So those short-term loans allow us to only borrow what we need, and then once the project's complete, then you pay, then you take all those short-term loans and you lump them into one bond. Obviously, you pay interest along the way, which is why that number is now $10 million. That was part of that initial bond versus what was a $14 million project to begin with.
That was well said. That was well said. I wouldn't, don't have anything to add to that.
Matthew's been working hard on me. All right. So on the next page, page 38, is a summary of our outstanding bonds as well as our EPC payments. I know one of the questions that came up in the community was the ratio of our principal balance versus the interest rate that's owed on those numbers. Can you just speak to how that compares to other districts? Is that something that looks in line with the industry? Is that something that we should take another look at? Is that something that seems favorable to us or not? What are your thoughts regarding the balance, the principal balance versus the anticipated interest paid over the next 12 years or so?
So one thing I'll say, the first thing I'll say is, these numbers on the page don't tell the entire picture. And the entire picture is when you issued that bond, which we mentioned back on page 37, $10,525, there was something associated with that called a bond premium. The bond premium is an additional source to the school district, and that is meant to lower your interest costs over time. So on page 38, where you see a total of $4,244,000 of interest payments to be made, the bond premium that's given to the district upfront lowers that effective cost over time. Now, this will be your cash outlays. That premium is received upfront. In the bond financing world, they talk about net interest costs, which is like, kind of like the true interest cost that the district has to pay, factoring in the coupon, which is what you see here, less the premiums that get reduced at effectively over time. The net interest cost in this case was about 3.2%. So that compares to a coupon of five. So first thing is, the numbers here on the page don't tell the complete story. The actual net interest cost is actually a little bit lower. Three, I mean, it's almost a better question for a fiscal advisor to come in and say, was this a favorable interest rate? Was it not? Alls I could say is, it's pretty typical to what I see at other school districts. And I also, it depends on your bond rating and how the market's, you know, looking at your specific situation and what interest rates you might get, and also timing of the market. If you went and did that bond today, I don't think you'd be getting that 3.2. You'd probably be looking at, you know, a little bit higher of a rate just because of the market. But it, you know, it is in line, I would say, with other nearby school districts that issued, that have issued debt around that time period.
Please, if anyone has questions, feel free to jump in. All right. So the next question goes to page 48 of the financial statement. It states that the district currently has $7,607,53 in our capital reserve fund. I know that the previous project that the district proposed to the public was anticipating using $2.5 million of that, so I think that's about 36% of that entire amount. And there was certainly some debate and concerns last evening regarding whether or not we should deplete that $7 million and then only borrow what's left, or is it more fiscally prudent to keep some of that money back for future projects and what the implications of state aid are, whether we pay out of pocket versus getting the aid back on it? So can you just speak to, I guess maybe twofold? One, what are your thoughts of that number, being a district our size and knowing our history, having ordered this for several years? And two, what would your recommendation be regarding whether or not we should deplete that reserve versus use a portion of it to offset the cost of the project? I know some of these are financial advisor questions, too.
They could be financial advisor questions. The first thing I'll say is, from an auditor's point of view, the most important thing that we look at when it comes to these capital reserves, essentially a savings account for future Capitol projects. The voters are required to approve setting up of these reserves. So it went to a public vote. The voters allowed the district to accumulate monies for Capitol projects. The total amount of that, I believe, was $10 million. You did spend some along the way, bringing this total to $7 million. So from an auditor's point of view, did you go out to the public vote? You clearly did. And are you within the confines of what the voters allowed for? And yes, you are. So the Capitol Reserve is, from my point of view, allowable under the guidelines. So I think that's first. It's certainly prudent to accumulate Capitol reserves whenever feasible. And the question of, you know, how much of it do you use versus how much of it do you save, it's really, I'll go back to personal finance, like if you're going to do a renovation on your house, do you want to raid your savings account and deplete it to zero to reduce the amount of debt you have outstanding, or would you rather kind of balance that out? So in my, in my view, it's always nice to keep a little bit in the pocket there, you know, for future unanticipated costs. So I, as a conservative accountant that I am, it'd always be my personal opinion to keep, you know, keep a little bit, keep a little bit behind. That's, again, that's just my personal opinion. Ultimately, decisions like that are Board-level decisions, and that, of course, needs to be approved by the voters. So it becomes a Board-level decision and a community decision on how those are handled. But certainly, what I, and I tell all districts this, it's a prudent reserve to have, but it's also very restrictive in that the voters approved it before, just to set it up, they also have to approve it again before you take it down. So you have like a dual, a dual mandate there where voters have to approve going in and voters have to approve it going out. So you are restricted in that way.
But, you know, like you talk about keeping a little bit back, but in a school district, a little bit doesn't necessarily cover if there was a major problem or major issue in the district, right? I mean, so, I mean, if you keep 10% back or 20% back and spend the rest, it seems to me that that doesn't leave enough for an emergency. But again, it's a person, yeah.
It's philosophical almost, you know, and I could sit here and talk about it for hours and we could discuss it for hours, and people ultimately will have different opinions on how much of that to use. I will say that, you know, in terms of capital improvements and the cost of capital improvements, $7 million is not a huge sum of money because a school district can spend that very, 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 very quickly. It doesn't take much to spend that. Just the cost I've seen, turf fields, you mentioned the turf fields. Roofs are very expensive, so any kind of building alterations, you know, are very expensive. So $7 million, you know, may feel like it's a big sum of money, but I don't, I don't really, it doesn't seem like a big sum of money from the chair I sit in.
Thank you.
As much as we wish $7 million went that much further, the reality is, is when you see the bids come in, it doesn't go very far, unfortunately. All right. So I think my last question that I had gotten from the community is on page 65 and 66. I don't know if there was a specific question per se, as much as maybe just confusion regarding how this chart reads out. Part of the complicating factor is it reads across two pages. I think some community members were focusing maybe on one side of the page without looking at the other. Can you just provide us sort of a quick overview as to what it is that this page tracks and how it's intended to be read?
Absolutely. So it is a two-page presentation, so looking at one or the other is kind of, just going to confuse the situation. This is a schedule from inception to date of all Capitol projects that the district is undertaking or trying to complete as of the fiscal year end. In this case, we're talking about June 30, 2024. So we start with, the first column is the project budget, which generally would be supported by some kind of voter authorization. If you go back to the bond that we were just discussing, the voter authorization in that case was $14.81 million, and you've spent, at this point, you've spent everything that you're going to spend, $14,694,000, which says to me, as the auditor, the district did not overexpend, overexpend the project, which is very important.
Dave will keep telling me that he came in under budget.
Yes, he came in, you came in under budget in that case. So that's one of the things as auditors we look for, and if I was a member of the public, you want to look for, that would be an issue if you see a district over-expending Capitol projects. You generally can't go over the authorization. So that's, that's an important thing that you would see on this schedule. It shows you everything that's been spent in prior years. That's a cumulative number from the day the project started. It shows you what was spent in the current year, and it gives you the total of all the spending on each project. And then it gives you what we call the unexpended balance or amount left to spend. If the number's positive, you have an underspending. So that means you've come in under budget. And then to the right of that, the right side of that page, is where we detail the different financing sources of those specific projects. Could be a number of different things in here. Bonds are the biggest numbers typically, and you'll see in that project, you know, all the bonds would be, would be considered, you know, proceeds of obligations. So that's bonds and other debt falls into that category, revenue source for that specific project. Interfund transfers are almost, in the case of a school district in New York State, almost always transfers from your general fund budget. So those are also voter-approved transfers to specific projects. Almost every district I go to authorizes, or the budgets authorize some current funding from an operating budget to, for generally smaller Capitol projects. And that's what you've done here with, for instance, the high school roof replacement is one of them, and a modular remodel, which is smaller dollars, and so on and so forth. So those interfund transfers represent amounts used earmarked from your operating budget, transferred over to fund those specific projects. Again, voter-approved through the operating budget. And then we have total revenues and fund balance or deficit. So fund balance and deficit would be how much money, how much fund balance is left on each specific project, which is related to the amount that's unexpended generally, assuming you've received all your revenue sources, it would be the same number. Bond anticipation notes outstanding is there to show that projects that are in an accounting deficit, that may show a negative amount in the fund balance, is really not, in a true sense, in a deficit because you have a short-term debt outstanding to fund that. So it offsets the negative. In reality, in my mind, as an auditor, the two added together should be a positive number. So, you know, for instance, you have some small amount of bond anticipation notes for school buses, the amount of that debt outstanding is greater than the project deficit, so you're not in a negative situation in reality. That is kind of how the schedule works. It tells, there's a lot you can see about project authorizations on this page. It's all here. The project, older projects, when they're complete and fully funded and have no money left, they'll be taken off. So, you know, really, really old projects wouldn't be on here, but anything that still has funding or still has money left to spend will stay on the schedule until it's 100% complete. So it's, it's a very nice snapshot of all the Capitol projects, all the funding sources, and the current status is the June 30.
So one last question regarding this page. From an auditing perspective, is there anything that raises any concern to you or any of your partners?
No. Again, the concerns would be balances without adequate project budgets, like if you were spending, started spending on a project without any authorization in a significant way, that would be a concern. We don't, we don't see that here.
I probably wouldn't be employed very long if that happened.
It would be very, that would be bad. You really just can't do that. You know, we also look for funding sources. Maybe a project is authorized, but the funding sources isn't there yet. What is that funding source and why isn't it here yet? Why don't, why don't you have that money yet? And I've been trained over the years to look for those things that might be lurking in a Capitol Projects Fund where, well, okay, you're authorized, but where's the revenue? It often happens with grants, but sometimes it, they take years to come in. Why is that grant not here yet? Why is that grant not here yet? And I, but I'm not seeing, you know, any of those types of issues here where you have, you know, funding sources that haven't arrived. Because you really only have two things in your case. You have the transfers from the general fund. And as soon as the budget's adopted and the fiscal year starts, the district can make that transfer. So the money moves from the general fund to the capital projects. It's there, it's available. And either you have a bond anticipation note used as a funding source. So that, that is your funding source. Or, or a bond, in, in the case we were talking about, and that represents your funding source. So you don't have any of those issues. Those would be the issues I'm most concerned about when I review this, this, these two pages.
Thank you. So I think one thing I just want to point out on this page, I know this question comes up a lot. The district received voter permission to borrow up to $1 million to fund school buses on a 2024 proposition. To date, the district has spent $145,548, according to this chart, of that money. What that doesn't mean is we don't have 800,000 sitting around in an account. If we go all the way to the right-hand side of the page, we show a deficit of $145,548. But a ban was taken out for $149,100 to pay that off. So when that is paid off, with our surplus will be less than $3,000.
Correct.
And the remaining 850,000 is available for us to borrow, but it's not, but hasn't in any way been accessed.
Exactly, and you can see that on this page. So you see the project budget in the first column is $1 million for the buses. The voters approved in, in one proposition, the funding for the $1 million. The district is now authorized to go out and get funding for that. I believe the plan is to do those purchases over time as, as you need the buses. There's generally a replacement plan for the buses. This is just the first year of that replacement plan. So you spent 145,000 and you issued a bond anticipation note slightly more than that because it was most likely estimated at the time you did the debt. So you come out with a, you know, $3,000 difference or something small like that. You still have the 854,000 authorized yet to spend. You don't have the cash in hand. You have to go back out to the market to borrow it before you spend it.
I think that's, that's the confusion sometimes. We're authorized to spend it, but we haven't already borrowed it.
Yes.
So it's not like we're paying interest on that money. It's not like it's sitting around waiting to be spent.
The debt, the debt has not been issued. And you can see that on this page, it's kind of like a nuanced thing. I think maybe a taxpayer looking at this for the first time wouldn't, wouldn't kind of grab that right away. But you see the project authorization, a million. You didn't, you don't necessarily have $1 million in the bank. If you see a revenue source of $1 million that you issued the bond, then you do. But in this case, that's not, that's, you can tell right from the page here, based on what we're discussing, that that, that's not what happened in this case.
So do any of the board members have any questions?
I just want to note that if you go to pvcsd.org, to the district info, to the current financial info link, if you scroll down there, under external audit reports, twenty-three, twenty-four, that's where, that's where you find that document that Dr. Luft is referencing. So it is on our website. Again, it's under the district info, current financial info. Scroll down, you'll see that information.
For, for a school district, what, what's the normal amount that would be allowed in the fund balance? Not the capital projects reserve, but the fund balance itself. What, what would you say would be a normal amount that's allowed in that?
So the discussion of fund balances is one that we always get to, you know, when I, when we come for the, the the public presentation, when, when this is complete, October, you know, usually when the timeframe is. The legal limit on fund balance is 4% of the next year's budget.
It is 4%.
However, that, that limit applies to what we generally refer to as unassigned fund balance. Okay? So if you're looking at page forty-eight of the financial statements, it schedules all the various components of fund balance. That 4% limit applies to this unassigned for fund balance only. The restricted funds are restricted in accordance with general municipal law or some other state law, allowing you to set aside additional funds for those specified purposes. The capital projects reserve that we talked about is one of those reserves.
Right.
As the voters authorized the district to increase its savings, if you will, or increase its fund balance to fund future capital projects. So the $7 million capital reserve is in addition to the 4% that you're allowed to keep. And you have other reserves here. You know, tax surcharge reserve, you know, that's a, that's a cost that every district unfortunately faces. Employee benefit accrued liability reserve. So all these, those other reserves, separate and distinct from the 4%, but they have to be used in accordance with the law.
Got you, okay. So the unassigned is a, a 4% limit, the unassigned?
The unassigned is the four, is where you get to 4%.
That, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate your time.
Can I just add? I'm a partner with, with PKF O'Connor Davies Accounting Firm. I'm not an employee of the district, so I'm kind of, you know, I'm required to be independent of, of the district as your auditor. I'm the engagement partner, so I'm the person, you know, who's basically authorizing the issuance of these audit reports. And in the audit reports, we say, you know, there's no material misstatements found in the financial statements. Or essentially, you know, that's what we call the clean audit opinion. And of course, we've, you know, that's the opinion we've rendered in this case. I just wanted to state that for the public, that we do maintain independence. I don't have any relationships with those on the board or those of management. That would be a violation of my professional independence. So just so everyone is aware.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for making the trip out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I would recommend people go to the website, watch this video, put it all together, so you can have a clear understanding.
If anybody in the audience would like to leave now that the audit report is done, I would understand. Sorry, I know, the auditors always get picked on.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, we will move forward to our next, thank you guys very much. Move forward to our next presentation. So our first presentation this evening will be our special education presentation. And I'd like to invite up Dr. Doherty and Ms. Melissa Estrella.
Small adjustment. Hello? Okay, this is our twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So we'll be discussing budgetary items within special education. Last year, we discussed the statewide deficit in services for students within special education in the area of preschool, ages three up to five. To mitigate that concern within Putnam Valley Central School District, we moved forward with opening something called a 4410. And we are one of two in the region that has opened such a service. So what that does is that allows us to have our own providers within Putnam Valley Central School District to help support students that require special education services at the preschool level. We are still continuing to work on expanding those services. So what we have also done is within our preschool area, it's important to note when you're looking at special education budget, that preschool services are funded through the county the student resides in. So we service both Putnam County and some of Westchester. So we work with both agencies. However, each school district within New York State is required to provide the organization and management of preschool services, which requires Putnam Valley Central School District to staff those needs. Currently, we service about thirty, sixty-five to seventy students each year. And we do that with the support of one CPSE chairperson. That's the Committee on Preschool Special Education. And we do this at about a point-two service. What has happened over the past four to five years is we've seen a significant increase in regulatory requirements, management and coordination of services. You can imagine with a statewide deficit, it really requires a lot of management and oversight for our preschool students. What we are seeing is that has required additional support and services from our staff. So over the next year to two years, we will continue to look at our staffing needs to see if there is an increase required. At this time, there is not. Yes, please.
I do just want to jump in at this point. I think it's really important to note, because I've been here for so many years, and I'm retiring at the end of the year. And that point-two CPSE position used to be, for many, many years, was always a point-four. When we reorganized, we started to use one of our school psychologists who does a point-two. So the management needs that we see now are changing. We now have anywhere between sixty-five and seventy preschool students. That's a large caseload of, we have to manage everything from special education services, OT, PT, speech. All of those services are coordinated through the district office. It's a huge undertaking. And I do think over the next year or two, looking to, to add support in that area will be important. So just wanted to put that out there.
Within the special education department, we also budget for students that may require highly specialized programs that are outside of our school district. We maintain, as we do every year, frequent communication with families and the school district to ensure that our students are receiving the best support services available.
So going into next year, we'll have one director, which will be Melissa Estrella. We'll have, we are posting and going out for one special education supervisor. So that is, all remains the same. The only change in our budget going into next year is the addition of one teacher at the high school that we, we will need. The concern, so we're going from 24.6 to 25.5. The increase really comes from, we have a full kindergarten cohort of students going into a highly specialized class this coming kindergarten. So we have eight students going directly into that class, which then pushes those students up one grade, you know, to a different teacher. So it, it's sort of this domino effect where each teacher that teaches the highly specialized programs, even though the need is at the high school, it's being driven from K to 12. So we, we are increasing that because it looks like, from our numbers, with the students we have graduate or finishing the following year, we will only need somebody for one year. So after talking with Dr. Luft and with Mr. Odell, I think our decision is really to go out for a leave replacement so that we know it's a one-year, it's a one-year need. And that change should, should be able to take place. And then I think that when you look at five-year projections, our numbers will, will be pretty steady over the coming years. I don't anticipate a whole lot of changes. The teaching assistance, we did increase from thirty-seven to thirty-eight. We have, like I just discussed, we have a, a very large kindergarten cohort with, and we want to be able to meet their needs. So we may not use the thirty-eight, we may only use the thirty-seven, but we anticipated the need for potentially one more teaching assistant. And then teaching aides. During this school year, we added two teaching aides. The difference between a teaching assistant and a teaching aide, just for everybody's knowledge, is really teaching assistants can do direct instruction under the, under the supervision of a teacher. Aides are really there for, you know, their physical needs, caring for them, making sure students are safe and guided. So there is, there is certainly a significant difference between the, the two. And then the clinical staff remains the same. Occupational therapy and physical therapy, the same, same for speech. This year, we made the change with Ms. Boyle. Ms. Boyle, we took out of the classroom last year. And she is a certified behavior analyst. And she is phenomenal, and she is incredibly busy. And even she is saying, like, we don't know how we, we didn't have somebody full-time. We, we used to use an agency that would come in and it was just so disjointed. And what Ms. Boyle has really done is addressed a lot of the, helped us address a lot of the behavioral needs throughout the district, K-12. And even, even just those little behavior management techniques that, that she's working with teachers on makes such a huge difference for everybody in the classroom who is a learner and, and there to learn. And she really is starting to help us create a, a district-wide behavior intervention system. So it's been phenomenal. I'm really so glad and thrilled that we did it and grateful. So we're going to continue with that next year.
Last year, I believe we also spoke about this. New York State continues discussions of encouraging schools to extend the school age from 21 to 22 for students with special education needs that have not yet met the requirement for graduation. The state is still pending their response on reimbursement. And it's probably unlikely that they will reimburse for after 21. New York State also asks schools to look at students with disabilities, the, the ratio to general education, and we are within guidelines. Our highly specialized programs continue to grow. And we continue to support our highly specialized programs with additional training, which also includes mental health, reading services, behavior management, and new explicit instruction. New York State also, NYSSA is the New York State Alternate Assessment. New York State right now is exceeding the required guidelines that the Fed has, has put forth. So with that, they're asking school districts to analyze our alternate assessment programs, which we are doing. We're increasing our training for both staff and also parents. And we're looking forward to rolling that out with, with local agencies next year.
So assistive technology training, we use in the, in the district in our highly specialized classrooms, we use augmentative communication devices. So you'll often see students with their own iPad. And on there, they have something called Touch Chat. And it really helps our nonverbal students be able to communicate. Recently, we just had a mother tell us that their child was able to say something to them through this device that they had never been able to hear from their child. And it was, it was actually really beautiful. And then certainly made us realize like how it doesn't just help us with our academics or help them to communicate. But at home, parents are able to hear and, and have a conversation with their child where they never had before. So we're going to continue that training. Ms. Boyle, Ms. Roberts, our speech therapist is heavily involved in training all of our staff. Our TAs are truly becoming experts on these devices. And then it really helps our students have a voice, and it's pretty amazing to watch. So if you ever are in the school and you get to, to observe it, it's, it's pretty incredible. Behavior interventions, I just talked about that a little bit. We, we are going to continue with Ms. Boyle next year, and it has been truly a great opportunity. Preschool, Committee on Preschool Special Education Services, as Ms. Estrella just talked about. We, we are required to do all of the management services for preschool, for our preschool students. It is funded through the county. I expect that to change soon. And I think that it's going to be entirely responsible of the districts, both financially and as it is right now, running it and providing it. The reason why I decided to move forward with opening up our own 4410 was for two reasons. One is because our students weren't, we were short on physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech. And our students were, were not getting those support services. So some of our own providers were able to sign up through us, through our own district, as a 4410, and they're able to see them after school. So it's sort of a win-win for everybody. And then the second reason is because if we are responsible at some point in time, and especially with universal pre-K, looking at being able to provide even special education support services to our students. So it's a great opportunity. We are in the process of doing a Medicaid application that even I'm stumped, I have to say. It is quite cumbersome. It is quite cumbersome, but we are going to start to bill Medicaid. Our new business official is helping to guide me. We are going to use a company called Kenny Services. So once that is up and running, hopefully that'll be set and ready to go as of July one. Any, any questions?
The, I know for years, the county has advocated to get rid of the preschool. When I was legislator, that was always a big issue at the time. From your perspective, when do you see that happening? Because I know it's something that the counties want done because they don't want the responsibility and they believe it's school-related and should be handled by the school. But what's your feel on that?
So I think, I think the federal government is maybe shifting. It's really, really, right now, it's through, it's, the feds funnel the money through the counties to the district, basically, is how it's, how it's worked. I don't know when that's going to change. I do suspect over the next few years, there's going to be a shift in the funding sources from the federal government. It's been talked about for years. And I think that the more I hear and the more I listen, I do think that that is going to shift. And that is going to be a large sum of money for the districts, for sure, for all districts across the state. I don't know when that will happen. I don't have a crystal ball, but I suspect it'll happen in the coming years.
I applaud you on the proactive step that you're taking to formulate, you know, like the, what is it again?
Forty-four-ten.
Right.
Yeah, there's only, us and Lakeland are the only two in Westchester, Putnam and Dutchess were the only two that went ahead and did that. And I thought it was really important, mostly because of the services for our students and we're able to provide them the support that they weren't able to get. And two, I think it's heading in that direction anyway.
That's excellent. Thank you.
I think one of the steps that we're taking to move, continue to move in that direction, right? So we hope to have, we're issuing our RFP for pre-K services.
Yes.
And we're hoping to have someone interested in coming in and providing those services. And now we're looking to actually host them right here on our campus. And it matches well with some of those early intervention services that our students need. In fact, there's another partnership with the county that we're exploring where we may be able to create inclusive pre-K settings where the county would provide both the special education teacher and the aide and be able to place students in our program. And it would be nice to have our faculty and staff approve to provide the services that those pre-K students may need.
That would be outstanding.
In our building, in our classrooms. So it would be, it'd be a good match between those two programs. And I compliment both Natalie and Melissa for the foresight of getting us positioned in a place to be able to provide those services to kids. So we're not sending them off to Carmel or Brewster or other places where they can get the services they need.
Good.
Thank you both. For the forty-four-ten, how are you able to find adequate support resources? Because as we know, in the world today, it's very hard to find the resources. How are you able to do that?
So I think our own providers are signing up with us. Like our occupational therapist just signed up with us. Our speech and psychologist have provided services. Like one student, we could not find counseling services for a student. One of our own psychologists signed up with us and we were able to register her with the county as a provider. And then the county now will send us the money and then we pay her. So that's just how we're doing it. It's word of mouth. We send out an email. We asked all of our providers if they wanted to sign up. And now that they're doing it, it's really nice because it's here in our district. Parents get to know the school. I always look at preschool as a time where we build relationships with our families. It's where they first meet us with their babies. And it's how we build our relationships. So now having some of our own providers do that work with them, I just think is one more way to build relationships and trust with our families from a very young age. Because, you know, they're parents that are coming to us with obviously concerns about their children and some of them have significant disabilities and it's just working out really nicely, so.
That's outstanding. That is really.
Yeah, it's a great program. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So our next presentation this evening will be our operations and facilities presentation. And I'd like to welcome up Mr. David Spittle.
I, like was stated before, was thrilled to see last night how many people were interested in what I do for a living. It was awesome. Usually I'm talking to Dan and about twenty-three people on TV about it. And last night, we had about a hundred people there and it was very, very exciting for me. So thank you all for showing interest in our facilities here. So tonight, I'm going to talk about facilities, transportation, and how I view it as building strength and stability for the district. So I had this at the end of my presentation, but I moved it to the beginning because it kind of, this is what keeps me up at night and drives what we do and how we view projects here. So these are what drives cost increases for my department here. And obviously inflation, I put it in red there. I think you've heard in the news that inflation's been difficult issue for everyone. Here in my department, the cost of materials have skyrocketed during the last several years. Also had contractual costs increase. A new transportation contract we just entered into at the end of last year with Royal Coach. This, in my transportation end, is a challenge because we knew that was going to be an increase in the cost per trip for us. Electricity prices, this has also been in the news. NICEG, thank goodness we're not ConEd, but there's been a huge increase in electricity costs. And this district, and I'll get into it a little bit, uses a lot of electricity. All districts do. So this increase is a challenge. That I, I'm always obsessing about future increases in electricity and energy costs and here they are. Oil and gas price increases, this has been steady recently, but this is something I always am fearful that we might have a spike in these that will cost, have created some budget difficulties. There's been a significant increase in the use of facilities here that I'm going to get into a little bit too. Since the pandemic, there's been just a steady increase and I have some theories as to why. Parks and Rec Department in our town has done a wonderful job adding a lot of services for the community and we bring a lot of them in here. So I'll show you that. And increase in labor costs when we bring, if we can't get a job done and it's not in a capital project, we bring local contractors. Hopefully, we try to find local folks, but, you know, their prices are going up and they charge us more too. Okay? So those are my challenges. So starting with transportation, this is the transportation team. It's twenty-two people and it's twenty-point-six FTEs. A few of them are part-time. And I'm not going to, this is going to be kind of a long presentation, so I'm not going to list everybody, but here they are. So there's the twenty-two people that are district employees, mostly between Mike and Ryan and Sarah. Ryan is the mechanic and Sarah and Mike really oversee the district transportation and they also do runs themselves and fill in as subs for the drivers. You see in the middle there, those are district employee drivers. And then the monitors. And on top of that, we also have, Royal Coach is our new provider and they have approximately forty drivers and eight monitors. So, you know, it's a decent-sized staff that we oversee there. That's about seventy or eighty people.
Dave, are you considered fully staffed right now in transportation?
For the moment. Transportation is always fluid.
As of today.
What's that?
I said, as of today.
Yeah, as of today, yes. We are fully staffed. But so, you know, when the district employ, our district, the way we divide it up, really the Royal Coach, the contract bus company, does most of the to and from school runs with the large buses you see out there and usually about five of the smaller buses. And then the district employees do a lot of, most of the out-of-district transportation for our students. And that's how it's been. So sometimes, you know, we work with Melissa and Natalie. If we have a student get a new placement or something, we have to add a driver and a monitor and get a vehicle for them. So that could happen. That could happen today, tomorrow, let's see. And we, the plan right now is to maintain the staff there. Okay? No increases unless Melissa tells me I need to add something. So the, this year, so last year, we did a deep dive. We saw the transportation contract going out to bid. And I was very fearful that the new costs were going to increase the heck out of our total transportation costs and really put a strain on the budget. So we did a deep dive into the transportation, overall transportation for the district and looking at all the finances of it. And we realized that adding more of our own Putna Valley drivers was going to mitigate the risk and drive down our overall costs and more utilize our overhead better. And so we, this year, we welcomed a lot of new drivers, get them used to us. They've been a wonderful addition to a person. They've been great. They treat our students really well and take care of them. Royal Coach has been surprisingly good, better than, well, I'm not going to trash the old one, but, but yeah, they've been, they've been great. And Shane, their dispatcher, has been a pleasure to work with. So this is what I was talking about before, where the overhead utilization, we had that, and I showed you Mike and Ryan and Sarah, and then we have the bus garage and everything. At one point, we were down to about five drivers and a few monitors and we had to sub everything else out to the contract company. And the analysis showed that we were under utilizing our overhead, the personnel overhead, the transportation building, and our vehicles. We had all these, we had seventeen vehicles last year, now we have eighteen, but we had eighteen vehicles and five drivers, right? So we were under utilizing our overhead, which is one of the reasons why we were able to add drivers and save money. So Beacon Mobility, what, besides taking care of our students really well, they also came with a lot of technology.
So just quickly, we, because we've been saying Royal Coach, just make the connection between Royal Coach.
Beacon Mobility is the parent company, thank you, for Royal Coach, is their local company that they had purchased. And they still sell Royal Coach on their buses, but Beacon Mobility is like a multi-billion dollar company that is their parent company. One of the things they pitched to us when we hired them in a new contract was they came with a lot of technology. Last presentation, I talked about a, the camera system they had that monitored how the bus drivers actually operate. And if they, if their hands are off the wheel, if they go through a stop sign, we get, they get dinged and it gets reported and all that. Has a bunch of cameras on the inside so we can investigate student behavioral issues and make sure they're all seated in the bus and safe going to school. But also, they brought this one we just implemented recently. It's a, an app. I just took that screenshot from a viewpoint that I get of all the buses that are out there at a time, and this is live. I can see them moving around and know where they are. We were able to give this technology to the main offices at each of the schools and to the dispatcher, Michael and Sarah, at the transportation building. So if a question comes in of where a bus is, we don't have to radio them. We can, we can see them on the, on the screen live. So it's really cool. Also, they have geofencing technology, which parents, if they sign up for this app, when this goes onto the website, you'll be able to link to a flyer. You hit that QR code and it's a download of an app that you can get on your phone that will, when the bus gets within a quarter mile of your house, it'll give you a notification. So you're not like looking out the window to see when the bus is going to get there and you'll know. So it's like, okay, the bus is a quarter mile away, that takes thirty seconds, go ahead and get out there. It just makes it so the kids aren't at the bus stops or out waiting too long and helps parents know when they're going to get picked up.
If anybody wants to know when ES1 leaves the elementary school campus, I can text you. So that was my practice alert and it still pops up my phone every single morning. I'm actually very impressed. It's within the same minute. Every single, I could use it as an alarm clock. But every morning, my phone goes ding.
Yeah, we rolled this out where Jeremy and I put it on our phones first to make sure it worked because we didn't want to roll it out to the public. And then we did some teachers who live in town and they rolled it out and said, okay, it had some kinks and we had to fix some things, but now we've rolled it out to the entire community. Except, district buses don't have it, right? So if we do have like New Horizons and some of our special needs kids take one district buses and we don't have this technology on it, I've been talking with Beacon Mobility about the possibility, but they, it's their technology. They're not that interested in handing it to us. I said it won't be free, but whatever. So we're working on that. I'd love to get it for our buses too.
So to confirm, this has been rolled out?
Recently, we sent Connectad out to each of the bus runs. We have that technology to have them be able to download this app and it's gone amazingly well.
What's been the feedback you've received from parents?
It's been wonderful. It's been great. People are really, in fact, there's a lot of no feedback, which is, which is positive as far as I see it. But then we did get some, some thank yous, you know, this is wonderful, this is good stuff.
And I assume there's some security in line where I can't monitor a bus. I have to have a child on the bus.
You have to have a cell phone number that has been given to the district as a main point of contact for the student. And then you're able to sign up to see that bus that your student is on. They have that worked out.
Thank you.
So this is our operations team. These are the cleaners, custodials, grounds, staff, and Val are my senior office assistant. You know, nineteen folks here. We plan to keep it the same. It was a little bit higher, but we had an extra half an office assistant or point four before. And Val is very efficient, so she was able to do it without, with just one. So now we're down to nineteen. It seems like a good number of people, but understand that there's three schools. So, and there's three hundred thousand square feet between the three schools. And we have two shifts. We have usually two custodians for each school come in in the morning, about five-thirty or so, work till two. And then after two o'clock, we have three cleaners in each school approximately. There's some crossover a little bit that work from two to ten. So it's really not a lot per school. And so there's, and then there's the three grounds people that will take care of the seventy-four acres that we have to take care of here.
And just, I'm just, I'm sorry, David, I just want to give him kudos. I mean, look at this floor. It's February. And this floor looks like it did after the summer and the first day of school, so.
Yeah, they obviously take a lot of pride in their work and the maintenance of the buildings and the equipment here, fantastic, we have a fantastic team. Everybody knows that they care and you could see it in everywhere you look, that they all care. And there's a culture that's been developed over many years here where people, and they care about every penny that's spent too. There's not, we're not whimsically spending money out there and going to Home Depot for nothing. They're going to shop around for everything. So, yeah, but, you know, one of the, the next slide here, the cleaning and maintenance during the school year is five or 10% of what they do? Most of what they do during the school year is operational support for programs. Okay? So whether it's, and, you know, whether it's this board meeting, I'll show you here. Actually, okay, I'm going to go ahead. Here. So, okay, so this is some of the stuff that they didn't do in the summer. We leverage their skills to do work that's not in capital projects, basically. Sometimes they do it in conjunction with local. Sometimes they do it in conjunction with local contractors we hire. But these are some of the work that they do primarily in the summer or at 5:30 in the morning before everybody gets here. Because once school starts, we can't be working in a classroom, working on stuff. So that's when projects are done. And then the cleaning is primarily done, you know, we clean up after lunch and stuff during the day, but after, between 2:00 and 10:00, we clean the 300,000 square feet. But operational support, this is, this is what we support here. You know, district programs, you can look at all those. Some don't take a lot. This, the folks, it took a good amount of time to set this up, you know, and they're going to have to take it down, and we're going to have to have lunch here or breakfast here tomorrow morning. So that'll happen, and it's not magic. It's a lot of work, and they're very efficient and really good at it. But these are just a list of the district programs that we support, that we set up for and take down and clean up after, okay? Then there's non-revenue generating community support. These, when I said before that there's been a massive increase in the use of our facilities, you don't realize when you're not here, there's always something going on here. There's always something going on in all three of our schools and on campus when it's nice outside, always a lot of things going on. This is just a small list of the things that we have to, as an operations team, set up for and clean up after. And then there are some revenue generating community support as well, that whether it's renting out the PAC, we take care of all that, taking up and down the pit in the PAC. That team that I showed you does all of that and enables us to derive some revenue from primarily the Performing Arts Center. The Wellness Center now derives a good amount of revenue, and the turf outside does as well. There's been a significant increase in the demand for those, the PAC is always full when we're not using it ourselves. And always being rented almost every weekend, you see dance competitions and things like that. The turf has been more and more, you know, Muljo uses it, Palumbo, they've had a very successful program. They come and rent our turf out. And so, you know, we derive some revenue, and our team supports all that. Here's what the athletic calendar, this is what the athletic calendar is. So after school is out, our team also supports, I know it's very small font, I'm sorry, Jeanette, but we also, we support the athletic programs. Like a basketball game will be like, okay, we have to pull the bleachers out, and we have to put the table out and the chairs and all that stuff. That's a little bit of work, but everything is some amount of work to get ready, whether it's lining the baseball fields or putting goals out or setting up for sports activities. This operational team does all of that, okay?
You have to think of it like a piece of art. Like it's meant to be viewed, not to be read.
Thank you, thank you. This, I'm sorry.
This wasn't the slide I was talking about.
Okay, good. So this is another one with no font, right? The font is really small. But this is the, that was the athletic calendar. This is, this is a facility use calendar for, besides athletics. So that's February, right there. That was because I could actually fit it. Other months, like January or, you know, longer months are even bigger. And you could see six days a week full of activities that we support here, whether it's, you know, Boy Scout meeting or, you know, the Parks and Rec. And Parks and Rec, again, we have a wonderful relationship with Parks and Rec, whether it's Ray and Frank and Craig Cottone and Amanda, they've done, they've built that program in town, Parks and Recreation Program over the last couple of years to give our community a lot of options between Taekwondo and, there's stuff that you guys don't even know. I walk by and I see a Taekwondo class. I didn't even know that was going on in the elementary school gym. But we, we offer them our facilities free of charge, okay? And our team supports that, okay? All of these activities. So that's what we do. So now, after last night's meeting, I came and I changed some of these things because I felt like I really wanted to download eight years of my knowledge in capital projects and planning them and running them and how we finance them. I just felt like I wanted to download all of that to everybody and they, you know, to give them an understanding. And so this is a chart that I made of the process for how we plan a capital project. There's a building condition survey you can see on the left there. This is mandated by the state. I work with the architects. They look at every, every aspect of a building. They assess it and they give it a rating of one through five. One is an emergency. I never have seen a one. I never want to see a one. This means it's a life and safety issue, or we can't open school like a collapsed roof or something. Twos are something we put urgent attention to because we think they may fail in the next several years. Three are things that we need to watch. Four are things that are pretty good, but we have to keep an eye on. And fives are kind of like a wish list for extra things. And that is an extensive survey. Architects, we have to do it every five years and make a plan. That goes into our, that, from that, we develop a five-year improvement plan. And this is a living document. It changes every day as I walk around and see different things that need to be done or could be done. I have continual input from the custodial staff, the tech team, the admin team, the faculty, hopefully some students, not enough, I don't get to talk to you guys enough, architects and other experts to keep changing that plan and adapting it to the needs that the students have here and the changing, and I consider changes in technology and programs and have to adapt the facilities to adjust to those changes, right? And that plan that includes identified needs along with rough budget numbers. So these rough budget numbers are kind of end up being a contentious issue, but the architects will look at a project or a need and they'll say, okay, this is the nurses' suite. It's X number of square feet. And to redo that, we generally put $400 per square foot or whatever the number is on it. So these are just rough numbers based on the architect's experience. That's all they are, okay? So then, a lot of these projects on this five-year improvement plan, we continually try to get done as we can with our in-house, with our custodial staff, particularly in the summer. And then sometimes we contract out work and to hopefully local contractors to do some of that work. And I had that list back here of the things that we do there, right? And then things that we can't do or can't afford, they're just too big, like a parking lot renovation, retaining walls. We can't do that in-house or too expensive. I have to go out to bid on it. And those kind of projects, we have to put them into a capital improvement project, okay? We have to do that. We can't afford to do it in-house. So those things make it to the next time we have a project. And we don't have these projects every year. We generally plan these capital improvement projects for when we have retiring debt so that we can use that debt, so that we can do these projects without having impact on taxpayers. We plan these out, the next time after this next thing that we're planning this capital project for, there's another seven years out, there's more retiring debt that I look at to say, okay, there's the opportunity to fit in things that I see seven years from now and might be, need to be done. Like an elementary school roof, it's 12, 15 years old. It's not going to, it's going to be at 20 years by the time we get to the next retiring debt. That elementary school roof is going to need to be replaced. It's going to be a big expense. It's going to have to go into a capital project. Middle school roof, the same thing, okay? This one will be done by then because we did half of it two years ago, and the other half we're going to hopefully do in this next project. So, but besides big projects, we also want to put other projects into capital improvement projects because the bad news is we have to follow the SED approval process, which means we have to have architects do drawings that are submitted to the state education department. They have to follow all of their requirements, stringent requirements on whether it's fire safety and ventilation and all the things that they require. And they have to have stamped engineering, engineers and architects drawings, and we have to have them do all that work and pay all that money to them. But they submit those plans to the state. So that's the bad news. The good news is we get 2/3 of that money back of anything we spend from the state into our coffers. So those projects, if we spend, if we spend a million dollars, we get 700,000 or $670,000 back from the state. So the projects that we're able to put into the capital projects, they cost us about a third as much as if we did it without doing that process. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So the funding on these capital projects, like this is the most important thing, is that state aid number. We get 66% back. And then the other funding sources, we look at energy performance contracts. This is where savings on electricity or oil or energy will pay for a bond over time to pay for the project. We did one of these back in 2018. It was about a $7 million project. We saved a bunch of money on burning oil. I'll show you that in a minute here. So that's an opportunity once in a while. We've basically expended most of those opportunities with the LED lights and stuff we put in here. Then there's some unique grants, some of the projects you've seen, like this, the courtyard here that we built with a wall out there. That was a one-time COVID money that we were able to spend on outdoor learning. So we took advantage of that opportunity and that state grant funding, basically, to do some nice, wonderful projects for the students to have some outdoor opportunities, right? And then the other is debt bond issuing. So if projects don't make it into the capital improvement project, like we're going to cut some things, and we did cut some things, which we'll go over, but they will go back to the five-year improvement plan. Some will never be done. Some are just ideas that I'd like to have, to do, or we'd like to do, or community members would like to do, students would like to do. They'll never get done because we can't afford it or whatever. They just don't make sense based on the economics. But they'll go back there, and then they'll just recycle back through and hopefully get done when we can afford it. So the capital project planning that we did this year, here's some of the highlights. We had an open invitation to the community to join the capital, which is well advertised. Anybody could have joined. We had a really nice turnout. And again, this is my perspective. It might not be the same. I might have missed some steps here. But I took the committee on an extensive tour of each campus to show them, and what my opinions were on what things needed to be done. And they came up and showed them, saying, look, this is, this is the condition. This is what the retaining wall looks like. This is, you know, here's the turf and the track. And we showed them everything. So it's not just my word for, you know, it's, we showed them, we brought them down in the elementary school basement, which is a kind of a dungeon-y place. But we showed them those old boilers that look like they're 100 years old, but they're only about 20. So we toured the facilities to look firsthand at what the projects in that five-year plan were. Then we brought in a financial advisor to give a detailed presentation to the committee on how much we could spend without raising taxes. Now, we, the whole goal here is to never raise taxes with one of these things. We don't want to do that, nor do we want to ever eat into programs for the students. But in the capital project, so they told us, and there was, they gave us three different scenarios where we could borrow, where we could do a project for $22 million, $19 million, and $16 million. And all three of those options, none of the three of those would have an impact on taxpayers. It would be a zero increase in taxpayer, in taxes if we did those projects. We wanted to be more conservative than that, and we picked projects that totaled, according to really rough estimates by the architects, about $14 million. So it was a conservative approach that the committee took to that. We didn't spend as much as we could. So then the committee collaborated and to vet and come up with different project ideas. They weren't all mine. They weren't all Jeremy's. They were, the whole committee came together and we looked at a lot of different ideas. And then we said, okay, well, here's our wish list. And we went to KG Dean Architects, and they came up with really, again, rough budget numbers for which each one of these things are going to cost. They're not exact, they're just budget numbers. They're not estimates, they're not quotes, they're budget numbers. And then they came back and say, okay, these budget, these, this cost, you know, whatever, $40 million, the project you came up with. And we vetted those, talked about those, weeded some things out, and we took a lot of things out. We had, we were going to look at solar canopies in the parking lot here to produce electricity when we redid the parking lot. I looked at other solar canopies over the bus garage parking lot over there to produce solar for us. I was really into that, obviously. Covered walkways between these schools, we looked at that, a covered walkway here. We looked at covered walkways at the elementary school to keep the kids out of the rain when we, to get into that building out behind the elementary school. We took them out of the project. We looked at the expense like, nah, we got to keep it down to stuff we really, really want and need here, especially need. We had looked at turfing over this flat area here between the locker rooms and the back of the bleachers there. Looked at turfing the whole thing. We had quotes on it, had it all planned out, you know, looked at the turf. We also looked at turfing the entire backfield where the softball field and soccer back there. We took those out, okay? Those were cut from the project, okay? So we, that's the project that you saw here. That has been whittled down by the committee over this whole process to that 14, estimated $14 million deal. So those are the components, and this is what the board presented to the public as what the capital project should be. So this is the slide I just put in. You can see I put no fancy pictures with it, but I just put it in this morning after seeing that, the response last night and the questions, really listening to people, what their concerns and questions were. I said, you know what, let's, I want people to understand the process from there. It's not over. It's just getting started. So when, if the voters approve a project, whether it's the one we put up or an altered one, and that's up to you guys, but the, then we meet with the architects and we collaborate with the committee members, district staff, other stakeholders to design each one of the projects. I've already met with the nurses at the elementary school several times. I met with Megan Boyle and Margaret and Carly over at the elementary school to talk about the playground over there and what they felt their needs were. But we will reassemble those stakeholders and the architects to really design more of the details of these, each one of these projects that the board puts out as the scope of the capital project. And we want to ensure each project meets the district standards for functionality, durability, and aesthetics. This is, this is what I think about, operational functionality for our students, how to make things run smoother, how to have these projects last a long time. Where a school district has been around for 90 years, I would imagine will be around for 100. I want stuff not to fall apart. I don't want, I don't want to burden the taxpayers 10 years from now because we built something that didn't last for 20, it only lasted for 10. And then aesthetics, as you can tell, I like things to look real nice, so. Anyway, then we have the architects that draw the plans, and then after they draw those plans, they come back to us with what they feel are more accurate numbers. plans, they come back to us with what they feel are more accurate numbers, more towards an estimate, not a quote on a project, but these are like, "Okay, now that we've built this out, we've drawn all the plans out, these are what, this is what we think based on our experience, what it's going to cost to do this work." And they have to, they have to build in some cushion for escalation, inflation, if there's tariffs or whatever happens, or they have to build some of that in, and they give us those more accurate budget numbers. When we built the Wellness Center, we thought, when they did this part of the process, they came back and it blew our budget numbers out. It was a million dollars more than we had thought it was going to be. So we had to do some what they called value engineering. It's 25 feet shorter than we had planned it being. It was going to have a lot more windows. We adjusted that based on what the architects felt it was really going to cost us, okay? So that's that part of the plan. And other times it'll come in less and we're like, "Phew, that's good," right? So we modify plans. Then the architects redraw the plans if necessary to value engineer them and get them within our budgets. Then they will submit the plans to SED. This is a months-long process. SED gives feedback to them and they have to submit explanations of why they're doing what they're doing and all that, and they comment on the plans. And then hopefully they approve the plans, they come back to us, and we get those plans, and then we put them out to bid, right? So we, hopefully, last time when we did that big capital project, I think there was like 30 contractors bidding on different things. And so they want, so this is how the school gets the best price on each one of those projects, is we go out to bid and in the marketplace, we have to take the lowest bid on these projects. That's how it goes, okay? And then the projects are awarded to the lowest bidder. And we don't have to take it then, we cannot do it. If the lowest bidder is higher than we thought, we can just say, "Okay, we're not doing that project." We have that, the board has that ability to do that. And then if we do award the projects, then we get to work. And as I keep telling Dr. Loft, every project that we've been involved with since I've been here, on time, under budget, and comes out looking great, okay? So everyone, we've done $30 million worth of projects in the last eight years. Other projects in town, this doesn't happen like this, but here, everyone, right?
Bridge is open.
The bridge is open, right? Tip of the hat. They finally got it open.
We did have one close call with Labor Day fire inspection when kids were coming the next day.
That is still on time. They were opening the next day.
He got it done. He got it done.
It was very stressful for me. So, okay, so I'm going to get into a little egghead stuff on energy projects because this is stuff I look at that affects, I'm not going to go over any one of the individual projects that we had into the capital project, but there's a couple of projects that I just want to talk about briefly because they will, as a budget presentation, they will affect future budgets. This is the history of Putnam Valley Energy Use, very exciting history here, but it's important to know. 1972, when that school was built next door, the middle school, it had electric baseboard heat. It did not have air conditioning.
I remember that.
What's that? You remember that? So do I. I was there. I was there in 1978, 798. Anyway, and then in 1998, this really visionary guy, Paul Lee, put in, did an energy performance contract back then because the electric heat was so expensive, he was able to save money to pay for a geothermal system that was really innovative back then. Nobody was doing it back then. And they put in geothermal ground source system at the middle school, and it provided both heat and air conditioning to that school using the temperature of the earth to do it. That's our source, and so we stopped using electricity for heat and started using geothermal. And then in 2019, we added some rooftop solar panels on all the flat roofs at the middle school. We did some LED lighting upgrades to reduce our juice and then put in a building management system like, you know, occupancy sensors and things to reduce energy there. High school, Paul Lee liked that geothermal so much and how it performed at the middle school, decided when we built this high school, he'd put the geothermal in here, and the board agreed, and they did that here. And since then, this high school has not used one drop of oil. We didn't use oil, we didn't decide to put burners, and we put geothermal in, and it provides heating and cooling to this school since 2000, again, without using any oil. In 2019, as part of that energy performance contract, we put rooftop solar panels on all the flat roofs here. There's a lot of curved roofs here, so it's not the whole rooftop. We also did LED lighting upgrades and a building management system for this school too. The elementary school has obviously a longer history, 1935, they had a coal-fired, a steam boiler in there. They switched to an oil burner, and they had to replace that oil burner at a great upset to the operations and the school. It was in 2004 or '05 or somewhere around there before my time here. And there was no air conditioning there. They had some air conditioning window units there. In 2019, as part of that energy performance contract, we were able to put a geothermal system in that school to provide heating and cooling to about a third of that elementary school. And when we did that, and I oversaw that project, we had planned to do the whole school eventually. We couldn't afford to as part of that contract, but we did put futures in. We did run piping out, and we did adequately size the return and the pipes that go from the fields to the school and back to accommodate more wells, to be able to expand the system. So we were thinking ahead there to eventually doing the whole school in geothermal, right? So right now, it's a third, geothermal and two-thirds are heated with the oil burner and the air conditioning, though you see those window units in like the K Wing at the elementary school are not very efficient, but window air conditioning units to keep those oil-heated areas cool in the summer. So, oh, again, the font, sorry. So this is some math that we did, and I did some calculations, looking at the square footage at the elementary school and what oil we burned there. And if we had chosen to move the middle school over to an oil burner system, and when we took out the electric baseboard heat, and if we had built this school with an oil burners, we would have burned 4 million gallons of oil since 1999. 4 million, like a tanker full. It's a lot of, lot of oil. At $3 and something per gallon, which has been the average, it would have been about $13 million we would have spent on oil, that we saved by doing geothermal over that period of time. Now, if we convert the rest of that elementary school to geothermal and get rid of the oil altogether, it's about 30,000 gallons a year, depending on how cold it is, but about that that we burn now, that will just be completely eliminated. And again, it's about $100,000 based on, you know, $3.33 a gallon or so. Then the kilowatts, the, this is, I'm sorry.
See, you can't see it, Dave.
This is the kilowatts from the, since the 2019 solar power.
That's since, right, since 2019, we've saved about 1.25 million kilowatts in electrical use, saving about $150,000 a year. If we add solar to the Wellness Center roof, the Wellness Center is a 14,000-square-foot building. We had some solar companies look at it. Only one-half of it is really positioned properly for solar, so it would be about a 7,000-square-foot solar array. When we built the Wellness Center, some students asked me, "Make sure that we can put solar on there." I said, "Okay, we'll plan it to put solar on there." And now we plan to do that here, and that will produce some more electricity for us, obviously about 200. These are rough estimates based on the square footage. These aren't a quote, but that 20,000 isn't good either. Now it's up to about 30,000 because of the price of electricity, would be the savings annually by doing that. So yeah, here's what I talked about, the elementary school, 30,000 gallons a year that we'll save, and we put geothermal in there. And the green in the middle is, you know, I talked to a geothermal guy from Nicota this morning, and I asked him, I said, "Are there any other schools in New York who are completely off-oil and use geothermal for heating and cooling?" And he said, "I don't think there's any other school districts that do this completely. I don't think there's any other in the country." So I think we will be the first district in the country to provide all of our heat and air conditioning with geothermal if we get this done. Pretty exciting stuff, right? This bottom one is very important. I keep mentioning geothermal provides heating and cooling. The cooling, most other schools, you guys don't know it, but you're spoiled a little bit here. It's always about 70 to 72, right? Other schools, the temperature, they don't have air conditioning in all the classrooms. And a new state mandate went in, say if the temperature in a classroom goes up to 85 degrees, you need to do some mitigating work, fans and stuff, and open windows. If it gets to 88 degrees, you can't operate the school, you need to close it down. Instructional time will get killed. So these school districts that aren't Putnam Valley, that don't have geothermal, that don't have air conditioning, are scrambling right now. They are looking at capital projects to spend millions and millions of dollars on how to cool their classrooms, big chilling units or whatever they're doing. It's very difficult to convert. An oil burner is good for heat, but you can't convert it to cooling, right? So you have to do a whole new system to cool. Schools are bugging out about that right now, but not us. Okay, that's Wellness Center Roof I talked about, because this is the...
David?
Sure.
For the roof, there's a concern out in the community that putting solar panels on the roof jeopardize and compromise the roof itself by puncturing it. Can you address that?
Of course, yeah. So I learned a lot here, obviously, in my time running these projects. The solar panels that we installed back here and as part of that EPC, they use a ballast system. There's no penetrations in the roof. So there's like these aluminum ballasts that they put these cement blocks in, believe it or not. It looks pretty simple, but someone made a lot of money inventing these things because you put those on, it holds them down, is good with winds up to 150 miles an hour or something.
So it's placing weight on them?
Just weight that hold them down.
Drilling into the subsurface?
So there's no, there's zero penetrations into the roof. And actually, the thing that diminishes the life of a roof mainly is the sun. And so having these solar panels on top of roofs with this ballast system actually extends the life of a roof. It doesn't make it more susceptible to leaks, it does the opposite.
That's, boy, that's, thank you, because that's been a real concern in some of the conversations I've had in the community, that, you know, putting the solar panels on would destroy the roof.
Yep.
And thank you for explaining that.
Okay.
And Dave, real quick, I know you've talked about where the solar panels are located, and I was asked that question also last night. I said I'd be lying if I told them the answer.
Yeah, when we did this energy performance contract, it was a wonderful project. I was so excited about it, but no one saw any of it. The geothermal was underground and the solar panels are on the roof. It's like, yeah, "What'd you do, Dave?" Well, and the LED lights were just new light bulbs. So what did we do for $7 million? All of the flat roofs at the middle school, all the flat roofs here have solar panels on them. If you see Google Earth, you can see that, fly a drone, we have some pictures of it. And the transportation building as well has some solar panels on it. It's a small installation there. Again, of course, I'm thinking for the future elementary school roof, when we replace that, I think it's, there's a big flat, a lot of big flat areas there. With no equipment on the roof, we can add a really nice solar array there to produce a bunch more electricity for us. So this is what we've done so far. We used to use 3.2 almost million kilowatts a year in electricity. I don't know what we used back in the day when we had electric baseboard heat at the middle school. I couldn't go back that far, but that's what we used on average a year, is about 3.2 million kilowatts. The energy performance contract reduced that down to about 2.3 million, and with this solar array on the Wellness Center roof, we can whack that down to just over 2 million kilowatts, okay? It's a lot of electricity. There's 300,000 square feet in this district that need to be lighted, and we do use some juice to run the fans and pumps for the geothermal as well. So this is, this is a nerdy thing, but I love it because this shows actually the energy use in BTUs and how efficient our school district is and how we use, what fuel sources we use for all energy here. And in 2017, you could see the high school used electricity, and the middle school, the blue bars are electricity. The elementary school used that much in electricity, but then had that additional amount in oil that we used, which was very inefficient. The nationwide average for educational institutions is about 83 and a half on this list, so we're, the other schools are half of that, were twice as efficient as the average nationally. The 2018 EPC, Energy Performance Contract, reduced that electric use. You can see there, the blue bars went down a bit, and then the elementary school, the geothermal brought that red bar down to where the elementary school is finally closer to the national average, and the other two schools are way below, were way more efficient in how we heat and cool. And then these last three bars are what it would look like if we do those portions of that capital project that we're talking about. If we do the solar and geothermal, we will get rid of the red, which is the oil, and that's what our energy use profile will look like as a district, and I'll put it up against anybody's. And next, I'm just going to talk about costs a little bit and why I'm so obsessed about this, and how we can protect our school district long-term against spikes in costs that will eat into the budget, right? This is what the actual numbers are. This is how much we spent on oil and electricity since 2015 each year, okay? You can see the Energy Performance Contract whacked it down. This is, you see this uneven graph, 2019, 2021, 2021, yeah, it was a weird year, it's obviously because of COVID, windows open, no school sometime, whatever. It was a lot going on there, but the price of energy was also cheap. So this fluctuates around because of different temperature years and of different fluctuations in costs, but the total in 2014, 15 was $500,000 in energy expense. And you can see these last several years, we're down at around $400,000, right? So even though the price of energy went up, we were able to save about $100,000 a year So that's what I just talked about there a little bit. And the, so the reason why we're so crazy about this is that if the price goes up in electricity or oil, it can really affect budgets, right? I was reading, well, I heard a district that's in Con Ed just had a surprise increase to the budget next year of $800,000 because of the increase in electricity down in Con Ed. I don't want that to happen upon a valley, all right? So the more we do to you to create our... So the more we do to you, to create our own electricity, our own energy here with our own resources, the sun that comes in here, the ground underneath, the more we can save long-term, right? So that's why I want to do more, more of this sustainable energy, right? Something else I want to mention here is that, just real quick, it is a law that this Inflation Reduction Act will give us between thirty and forty percent of a direct payment to the school district on both the geothermal project and the solar project on top of the state aid. We won't get more than a hundred percent, but if we get sixty-six percent back in state aid, and we get thirty percent IRA funding, which is a law, these projects, this geothermal and this solar will essentially cost a district zero, and it will produce this, this electricity and heat and, and air conditioning for us for a long, long time, right? So, one other thing, just that Jackie's helped me with this. We, we were recently nominated by New York State as the only school district in New York State to be nominated to the, to the federal government as a, a national green ribbon school. Every time in the past they've been nominated, we, they would get it, so I think we're going to get it if, if that Department of Education still does things like that. So we, we, we really proud of the work we did to, to, to get that green ribbon nomination. Any questions?
That's very thorough, David, thank you.
Yeah, I know, it's a long deal.
No, no.
Sorry, it's a lot, though.
It's important, especially the, the Capital Projects material, the reasoning behind why the projects were on the list to begin with.
Right, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the process, you know, and that's what I felt coming out of last night, that's like, you know, I really just wanted to, like, give all that information I just gave to everybody in that room, and I know I'd bore the crap out of everybody, but, but I wanted to give that in public, so it's here.
This is excellent.
And that you, people understand how we approach it. It's a very thoughtful, a very, a very thoughtful process. And, and we really try to save the taxpayers as much money as we can, and never impact the education services for the students. That's our goal, all right?
Thank you, Dave. You definitely tell your passion in facilities.
I was just going to say, I wish you could bring a little passion with you.
Oh, sorry, it's just how I talk. Sorry. Any other questions?
I just want to point out, I think two of the items that are most impressive to me is the list that you showed in the beginning, the amount of work that is accomplished between the partnership between our own in-house staff and local contractors. And the projects that we're able to accomplish this way save taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I've worked in several school districts, and with few exceptions, having the skilled labor in-house that we do, and the partnerships we have with local contractors that allow this to get done, is unheard of in many districts. So a million dollar project to build a middle school support suite was accomplished with a hundred thousand dollars of in-house talent and local labor to be able to produce the same output. And it's just an amazing recognition for both Dave and his staff that are able to accomplish so much. And I think the chart that, that captures the savings of the sustainable energy sources that the district has really, again, saved taxpayers money in the long run, in an investment in the foresight that went into investing in geothermal nineteen ninety-eight, when those projects started, I think is just hugely impressive. And I know many of my colleagues are like, wait, how do you have air conditioning? People are freaking out about this state legislation where they have to find new spaces for any classroom that's above eighty-eight degrees, because I have colleagues who say every one of my classrooms is above eighty-eight degrees at the end of June or the beginning of September, and they have no idea what they're going to do with their kids if they can't occupy those spaces. And I get all kinds of looks, but I'm like, oh, we have central air, so we don't have to worry about it. And it's, it's unheard of, again, in public education to have the, both air conditioning and heat the way we do here, so, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Wow. So we're going to move to new business.
Very good.
And resolution number one, Mr. O.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to amend the previously approved retirement date, January ninth, twenty twenty-five, work session business meeting for computer specialist Laura Sherwood to be effective at the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as per document one thirty-five slash twenty-five attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Stephanie Chin from the district effective Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as per document number one thirty-eight dash twenty-five attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extentions? Resolution passes. Number three, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District hereby nominates the following individual as candidates, or individuals as candidate or candidates for election to be held on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, to serve as trustee for the Putnam Northern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And our recommendation is Tina McKay, resides seventeen Tyler Road here in Putnam Valley, a resident of the Putnam Valley Central School District.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Tina was here.
She was.
Okay. But Tina served on the Putnam Valley Board of Education.
Yes.
And has served for many years on, as a Putnam resident on the, on the BOSI's board, and we appreciate her service, and so we're nominating her to run again.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution passes. Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public to comment on any topic.
Quiet.
No?
No.
Okay. Okay. Topics for upcoming meetings.
So our next board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March thirteenth, and that'll be our first full-budget presentation. And the following meeting, if there's any revisions or just a repeat, March twenty-seventh will also be our full-budget presentation.
I have a quick question. I went to the archives for the videos, and I noticed that the first meeting of the month is not included in the archives. It's just the business meeting. The second meeting is, is archived. I, I was looking for, you know, the, the meetings that we usually hold the very first time, the work session meeting. I couldn't find them on the archive.
For this year?
How would you locate those?
For this year?
Yeah, yeah, for this year.
Dan will help you look.
Yeah, all meetings are on there. We don't distinguish phone to the other. So maybe we could double check to make sure we didn't miss one somewhere, but.
Yeah.
We can, we could certainly look and.
Because we do.
Even if the meeting's over, I could.
We do a lot of work at that, that first meeting. It's a work session, but we also do a lot of business, so.
Um, at the meeting on the thirteenth, the Facilities Committee is going to re-meet before that date, yes? And, and give us some recommendations?
Yeah, sorry. Sam, was there, which meeting were you talking about?
What's that?
Was there a date of the meeting you were talking about?
Well, I, I was looking for the, the first meeting of January.
January ninth?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on here. It's the second one down.
Is it, is it there?
Yeah, it's under Board of Education, and then if you go to Meeting Videos, the first one's February thirteenth.
Under the Board of Education.
Board of Education.
You know what I was doing? I was doing it off the webpage.
Oh, maybe, that's why.
Yeah, they're, they're, they just.
Yeah, so Board of Education, Board Meetings, you'll scroll on, you'll see a snapshot. I always have a silly look on my face every time. Dan, could we do anything about that? Just randomly captures it? I'm laughing in this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry, there was another question. Oh, so yes, we are planning Facilities Planning Committee, a follow-up from last evening's committee meeting for, I have to look it up, next week, March, no, not next week, the week after. We're looking at, not May, March.
Eleven through twelve.
Twelve, the Wednesday, right?
That's just the day before?
We work fast. Um, yeah, so we're going to do a lot of work in between now and then. We're going to consolidate all of the table responses we received last night, and then we are going to meet with the committee, we're going to go through those responses, come up with a new scope and sequence to share with the board, and then we really want to focus on some of those other questions that had emerged last night, specifically around communications and finances. So we're working on a presentation now to have ready for the twelfth, and I anticipate coming here on the thirteenth, what a recommendation for the board to consider.
Okay, all right.
Yep, we're going. If we're trying to hit that March thirteenth date, we, we have to get it done, so that's the, the time we have to get it to.
Sometimes deadlines are helpful.
I have no doubt we'll get it done.
Board member comments? Any other comments?
I, just the other night, I, I was wowed by the amount of people that were there and their input. That's probably the biggest group we've had for any type of project discussion, as long as I've been involved with the district. I had well over a hundred people, all contributing, all bringing their ideas forward, and I, I thought that was excellent, that the community showed, you know, so much interest in this.
Yeah, there's a lot of misunderstanding about taxes, full value assessment, like, how that affects tax, I mean, you know, and a lot of, well, I just hate paying taxes. Well, join, join the club. I don't know anybody that enjoys it. But I, I wish there were ways to get information out to people about the process, you know, and, I don't know, give them an understanding of how this works. I've had people say, what, but I voted last year, like, well, you have to vote every year. You know, it's, it's, they just sometimes don't understand, and, and I wish there was a way of getting it clarified for people. But this is one way, so.
I did make a mention that if I knew a hundred people were showing up, I would have started with some kind of performance, so maybe we could work on like a teaser for the show for next meeting, if you guys are up for it. It's intimidating, we got a hundred people in the room, and I had to walk up on the stage with no microphone and talk loud enough for them all to hear me, but if, if we had like a showstopper to start, that would have quieted everyone down right away, so.
Could have saying, look to the rainbow, right?
We could talk about it, if you guys are available on the night of the twelfth, and throw something together.
I, I have a question for our student reps. Mr. Mello sent out a notice about cell phone usage. You, you all received, what's your opinion about that? What are your feelings about the cell phone?
Policy?
Reconfiguration.
I think, I mean, I feel like the email he sent out was kind of, I don't think there was really any new information on it, like, it was a lot of the same policies we've been following since the beginning of the year. And I think it just, it really goes class to class, like, some teachers care more about having that phone in the cubby the second you walk in, and other teachers, as long as it's away and it's in your backpack, like, it's okay. So I think, I don't know, I think everyone has their established rules that they establish in September, and I don't know.
So you've kind of been primed for it already, then, what you're saying?
Yeah.
By what the teachers do in the classroom.
Yeah, it was more of a reminder than something new.
Yeah.
I think they started the year with a, a lot of conversation around cell phone use and keeping it in airplane mode and, and being attentive to what's going on, and I'm sure, I mean, people forget things over time, so it was like a mid-year reminder.
I thought it was good. I did, on a personal.
Well, and I'm concerned with the state push for a ban on cell phones bell to bell, nowhere in the buil, building, and no allowances for programs that we have that might be working really well, and where it's not causing a problem. And my comment always, when it comes up, is I don't want to ban them. I want to teach students and staff to use them appropriately. And a ban doesn't necessarily do that. It just shuts the door completely, so.
See, I.
We're still advocating for, you know, some flexibility for districts to make their own policies, as long as the policies include some plan for it not disrupting the learning.
The, the age appropriateness of it, I, I think, has to take center stage. I could see banning it at the middle school. I really could. You know, you, you don't use that, you know, your parents need to contact, to contact that domain office. In the high school, you're dealing with a much more mature age group.
Yeah, but the policies they're putting in effect are K to twelve.
I know, and that's, that's my upset with it.
And just for the record, cell phones at the middle school and at the elementary school are, in fact, de facto banned. Students aren't allowed to have them.
Which is a good thing.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to call out a couple of things or people. Jackie and Jean, I think you did a great job organizing last night. We had a lot of people there and a lot of activity going on, so thank you guys for your work there. Maureen has been sending us a lot of, some great things that are going on the rest of the year. Maureen has been filling up our calendars, so thank you, Maureen, for that research and getting that on our work. And Matt, thank you for coming tonight. We know Grace wasn't able to be here tonight, so thank you for representing the Finance Department, so.
One of the invitations that Maureen sent us was, was TOK and?
CAS presentation?
CAS. At the same time? It was one day, from like eight, eight-thirty to noon?
Yeah, I see, March twenty-sixth, CAS and TOK presentations. I know that we were looking to make it more of an event, as opposed to people coming in kind of drips and drabs during their lunch period. So this one looks like it starts at eight-thirty in the morning, so maybe it's a more defined time, or we're going to make it more of an event where students come and present, and we can have more students present there, as opposed to.
That'd be great.
The drips and drabs.
Yeah, one student at a time.
I just couldn't.
And I know, I think in the long run, we're actually looking to see if we can turn that into an evening event and treat it almost like we do the banquet, invite parents in and make it.
I love that idea.
Make it really something that's special, meaningful for the kids and for the families to see some of the very hard work that's been accomplished.
Well, it is amazing when you listen to the presentations, and there's only, what, three or five people there, Jeanette on her computer, but.
I love those, I love watching those.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, that's good to know. I'd like a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night, all. Thank you for coming.